...that you have given us to enjoy and for our city employees and workers who make this city a great place to be. Help us to do our due diligence this evening, to think through things thoughtfully and carefully, to ask good questions, and to work together to do the best for those people that we represent. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Diane. We've got a lot of work to do here tonight, so I think we'll dive right in. We'll start with the approval of the minutes from the August 5th meeting. Lynn has presented those. Are there any corrections?
No, I've read them, so I make the motion to approve them.
I'll second that.
Okay, Jerry and Cindy, all right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, welcome all our visitors tonight. Again, thank you for coming a little early. Lynn, I think you've included the Comcast franchise fee for the second quarter.
I have. It's about the same as it was last year.
Okay, 3% of your business for the quarter. Any questions on that? All right, and then the July fund report is in there. Any questions there? All right, we actually have one more report. The stormwater utility study was put down in new business, and it's actually just going to be, for your information, that report was included in your packet. I hope you had a chance to look at it. As we sat down and looked at the sustainability of the stormwater utility with all of the projects that have come up, again, you know, our county is very challenged with our water tables and our stormwater situation, and we've learned since the stormwater utility's been a part of our government here that we've got a whole lot more projects that we need to get done. And instead of just me telling you that, I asked Ryan Workman, our utility manager, stormwater utility manager, to put together a report that lists the projects that we have done, the projects that we need to do, our source of funds from the utility, the fees that we generate from the utility, and then obviously where we're making up the difference to get some of these projects done. And at some point, I think his conclusion is we're going to need to raise that stormwater utility fee. We're not asking you to do that now. What we're doing is giving you the information so you can look through it, look at the projects, see how they impact every neighborhood in this community. I'd like for you to meet with Ryan as you need to, to get clarity on these projects, and most importantly, the priority of these projects and the...
He cares for the results for the circuit.
Sorry, I'm glad I'm not the only one that does that run. And then, he threw me off.
Sorry, dear.
It's all right. Obviously, the priority of these projects is important, but the costs of these projects, you know, some of the higher priority ones may not be too expensive, some of them are extremely expensive, and we've got to be able to sustain this utility and manage those problems. So, again, this is going to be something that we're going to look at, but I think the first thing was to give you all the information that you needed to look at those projects, again, the kind of the history of the utility, where we're going, and how we're going to need increased funding to continue to take care of the stormwater needs in this community. So, with that, Ryan, do you all have any questions? I know you've had a chance to look at that.
I'd just like to make a comment. Since Ryan's worked on this, he has really established great community partnerships, and I sit on the boards of a couple of the organizations that he's worked with, and I hear continually, "Okay, Ryan was out with us today, and we walked this." So when Ryan's presenting these things to you tonight, it's not just like looking at aerial views and topographical maps. He's actually been out with our county surveyor, our soil and water conservation district, our watershed foundation conservationist with the Lilly Center conservationist, and they all have a great deal of respect for you, Ryan, and I just wanted to pass that on because I've seen you grow into this position and do an awesome job at creating community collaboration, and not just on some of the projects we're looking at, also within the construction community, and you're well-respected, and the things that you suggested in order to mitigate some of the runoff from construction sites has been very well-received, and so I just want to thank you for the amount of work that you put into this because I know how many miles we're on the ground in the kayaks and other things in order to get this report to us, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, again, looking back at the report, it's a 25-page report that's pretty comprehensive, and this was all done in-house, I believe. So, again, I really want you to spend some time, again, this is not something we're going to discuss, we're not pushing to do this now, but potentially after the first of the year, we're going to have to look long and hard at how we're going to sustain this utility, and I really want you all to have the background information necessary to start to formulate your opinions on that and to ask questions. There's plenty of time to worry about that, so. So, any other questions of Ryan from that report that he's created for you all? All right, you must done a good job.
All right, sounds good. Yep, and just like Mayor Tomer said, feel free to reach out to me anytime, and I'm fairly responsive with that, so even if you want to step by, I know we, Jerry Fresh and I, have had many meetings up in my office. He'll just come up and ask me a question face-to-face. Feel free to do that as well, and then if not, we'll set something else aside from that, all right?
All right. Thanks, Ryan. All right. We do have a transfer resolution tonight to consider. Jeremy?
Yeah, I'm requesting your approval on a transfer for two reasons. One being for professional services that we're working towards projects for next year in the Northern TIF, so just need to transfer some professional service money in there as we prepare for next year's projects, primarily the engineering on 150 and US-30, as well as engineering for the continual oversight of the Airport Industrial Park. The second item is a debt service payment that will be the first payment towards the airport sewer park or sewer project, that bond issue that was done in 2018. Because we had already budgeted in June for 2019, I did not have any payment scheduled and couldn't foresee what bond payment we would have, so I'd need to move some money into that bond, that debt service category to pay that bond for this year.
Questions?
I'll make the motion, we approve Resolution 2019-01, or 08-01.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Jeremy, I'm going to have you stay up there because we're going to talk a little bit. I'm passing out. I had mentioned at the last meeting that our net evaluate, or net AV went up, assessed valuation went up a significant amount, and I was a little gun-shy to mention the amount at the last meeting simply because I really wanted to make sure it was correct, and I got ahold of Michelle Puckett across the street at the county office, and she went through everything, and actually, this is her worksheet. She's provided the source of increase. Our net assessed value went up almost 16%. It went up $151 million this past for next year. It'll take a little deciphering on here, but essentially, the annexation of the Airport Industrial Park and other areas yielded about a $60 million increase in the assessed value. There was some trending, and I'm not going to say the amount because that was not reflected in here, but I know the assessed, they trended last year and this year, and that, some of that's reflected in here as well. It looks like somewhere between $60 and $70 million of other increased assessed value occurred within the city of Warsaw. So, the Warsaw Plain that you see on here is essentially the Airport Industrial Park annexation, and then you'll see down the bot, on the top summary there, I've yellied out the phase-in Warsaw Plain. That includes the abatement on the real estate out there. So, you know, the phase-in itself, but there was other, other abatement and property that wasn't part of that annexation. So Jeremy and I, we figured about $60 million was the amount that was a result of that airport annexation. I mentioned that at the Board of Works on Friday because, you know, we're looking at about a $6 million investment in that area in our sewer extension out there, and we're going to be looking at an increase, or we're going to be looking at having to provide more roads out there to improve the roads out there in the future. So, we are making investments, we're going to have more maintenance out there with all the land we've annexed, but I wanted you to see how that's going to benefit the tax base and how that's going to broaden that for us, and you can see that with about a $60 million increase, that's going to have a huge impact. With that, we are also allowed an automatic increase in our levy based on the amount of increased assessed value that we create from annexation. So, again, knowing that there are more roads to police, more roads to build, more roads to maintain, more for fire service, you know, up and down the line, the street department, they're all going to have more road miles, and the state does understand that if you increase by a percentage your assessed value, they will allow you up to 15% an increase in your levy. So I think, Lynn, we figured, what, about 6%, 7% today, the $60 million? So, that will be reflected as we move through this budget cycle. I want you to keep that in mind as we look at some of these increases in here, that, again, that, those expenses are, excuse me, I should say, that increase in levy is designed to take care of that, those maintenance costs, so. But again, understand also that with the broadening, with the increase, remember last year, I think we increased $38 million in our assessed value. Well, this year, we're, again, at $151 million. It's quite a significant jump, and that broadening of the tax base is going to keep our taxpayers' rate down. We're spreading this cost out over much, again, 16% greater assessed value.
And Mayor, I'd just like to add that.
Sure.
Just so everybody knows, it's because of the annexation that they can increase our levy because we did the annexation by the end of 2018.
Yeah, it's...
It's not like a levy appeal that we're appealing to increase. It's like an automatic increase because of the annexation.
It's part of the process, but you have to show those increases in your levy to be able to collect that and to be able to take advantage of that. But as Clerk Treasurer mentioned, it's not an appeal, it's just that's an automatic process with these annexations, and again, this is a pretty significant amount. So, again, we're creating quite a bit of investment in our community as evidenced by this, but we're also having to spend some money with the sewers, with new roads, and then with the maintenance of all the above. But I think the net benefit is really what we've been trying to accomplish for all the years that we've been doing this. I think this is pretty obvious here how this is paying off. Jeremy, I asked you to maybe talk again just a little bit about, you know, what we're seeing this year.
Yeah, we talked a little bit at the last meeting. Construction takes a little bit of time, doesn't happen overnight, so we've had a great deal of construction in the last five years, and if you look at the numbers per our construction, you may see somewhere in the $150 million of construction over the last five years. Some of that happens on a year-to-year basis, where they may start construction and finish construction, but in the case of some of the larger projects, they may fold over into that next year, so, which would basically have a larger impact in one given year than maybe the next year, so. And this year, you can, if you look at that sheet, you'll see some of the bigger projects that have been under construction for the last few years are now starting to hit the assessed value rolls, whereas maybe they were, started construction in '17, but didn't necessarily hit '18's rolls, but end up hitting a '19 going into '20. So, that's some of that that factors in there, and then the large part is the annexation. If you go back to the fiscal plan that was presented back in October of 2018, it'll really give you a pretty good idea of what we're talking about right now and really show you how we got here, right? So there's two different sections of that fiscal plan. There's the capital and the non-capital. What Joe is specifically talking about, specific to the levy, is your non-capital cost increase. The capital cost increase is really factored into, the reason why we TIF'd it was to capture that, those funds to put the infrastructure in the ground. So, we're spending the $6 million to put the infrastructure in the ground as part of the capital expense, sure, they'll be paid for by the TIF increment itself. The non-capital cost are your public services, your police, your fire, your street department, your parks department, all of that is factored in as non-capital, which costs money, and is shown in that fiscal plan as the impact on us as a, as a community, as a council trying to pay those bills, right? So, those are the street department, the police department, the fire department increases. Those are the things you're looking at in the budget that's going to be reflected by that levy increase. That's allowed under the statute to address those additional non-capital costs associated by the expansion or the bringing in additional developments. The capital plan that we put in place, I feel confident will address the issues going forward as far as the capital improvements, and those are basically infrastructure improvements, whether it be your storm, your sewer, your larger road project, not your maintaining the road, but reconstructing your roads, your curves, your gutters. So some of those roads out there will need some reconstruction over the next five to 10 years. That capital plan that was put in place by the TIF district will address those capital issues, so really what you're talking about now is the non-capital. A lot of the growth that we've seen has come from our ability to use the TIF districts to put the infrastructure in the ground that generates the growth. A large portion of the growth that we have seen within the technology park, the intended plan for the Airport Industrial Park, as well as the 15 corridors, really come from the infrastructure we've put into the ground and continue to put into the ground. The 300 North Project last year, Phase 1, and then 300 North Project Phase 2 this year, those are all improvements that we're doing, using those TIF funds, put that infrastructure in the ground that are going to generate additional revenue as development occurs. So, a lot of the projects we've been working on for the last five, five to eight years are really starting, are starting to pay off. I remember in 2005, I started in '04, 2005, one of the first issues that was brought to my attention was the Airport Industrial Park. And it's, these things don't happen overnight. I mean, from 2005 till now, we're finally putting sanitary sewer in the ground, and it's taken a long time, a lot of planning, and a lot of thought into how we're going to pay for that infrastructure to make those capital improvements from 2005 to now. So that's a lot of the things that kind of go on behind the scenes that really reflect in what you're seeing now. It's not going to be something that's going to happen every year, but obviously, we've kind of had this pent-up construction, this pent-up AV that's been sitting there waiting to hit the rolls, and certainly, we expect the industrial park to grow. We've had a lot of conversations with people out there, and I'm expecting it to grow as soon as the infrastructure is available to do so. So, a lot of that planning, a lot of that forethoughts led to the increase in AV, and we anticipate it will continue to grow and continually be spread out, which will help us keep the tax rate down for the community as a whole.
Questions? So just one other thing I wanted to mention, and Jeremy brought it up, you know, some of this, and I don't, I can't enumerate the amount, but abatements in TIF don't last forever, and some of this increased assessed value is abatements that are coming off, that we completed our 10-year abatement, and now those, you know, we're going to, actually, we're going to see those increases in the levy and the taxes. But more importantly, the TIF, as TIF rolls off, again, you see that a lot of that, that TIF value, assessed value moves back over into the general fund, so, well, not the general fund, I suppose, the, wherever we decide it goes.
Well, it goes to the tax base at large, so.
Yeah.
In general, one of the things that we're charged with, and you can see, and we've talked a lot about this, whether you have a successful TIF or an unsuccessful TIF, the GAC is a prime example of something unsuccessful. I mean, we would much rather like to have something there that was generating taxes, whether we're collecting it as a TIF or it's being collected through the tax, tax base as a whole. To have nothing, you get zero, right? So we've spent a lot of time trying to create profitable projects in terms of generating income that's going to benefit the community. When the Northern, when I took over the Northern TIF in '04, it wasn't making enough money to pay the two obligations that it had outstanding, so the obligation of the sophomore Danic bond, which came first, so it was making just enough funds to pay for that, but it also had a $600,000 pledge to the sewer project that was done in the early 2000s, late 90s. So those were the two pledges at the time the Northern TIF was created, and in '04 and '05, it wasn't even making enough funds to make those payments. It was making the bond payment, and there was very little funds to go towards the sewage project. Fast forward to 2019, not only paying all the bond obligations that we have, but on average, we were somewhere in the one and a half million dollars range for capital improvements projects. And then, once you get that ball rolling, if you successfully complete projects that are going to generate more, more projects in future revenue, that's how you successfully build those TIF districts. In the end, the idea is that TIF district's going to roll off after you've created something from nothing and benefit the tax base across the board, whether it be us, the county, the library, all the different taxing, the township, all those taxing agencies are going to benefit immensely by the fact that we've taken a TIF district that in early 2004 had a net value of $9 million, so it had a base of $9 million. That was, everybody was taxing that $9 million. Fast forward to 2019, we now have a net base of $124 million. So that, that middle, that, subtract those numbers, that's, 10 years from now, that's the money that's going to go to every taxing agency, or have, every taxing agency will be able to benefit from the improvements that we've done, created, from the assessed valuation that we've created. So that's the intent, and we're hoping that we're going to do the same thing with the Airport Industrial Park. It's not our intent to just grab it and let it sit there, it's our intent to make those improvements that are going to create value-based projects that are going to ultimately create revenue for the tax base as a whole in the future.
And that's, that's critical, again, looking at our investments and how they're, they obviously benefit, and that was a perfect example. I do want to correct something. I said the abatements don't impact the assessed value. The abatements impact the amount that you collect in taxes, so there's no abatement roll-off in these figures here, so I stand corrected on that. Anything else? Any other questions? I know we spent a few minutes on this, but this was really, I think it's important that you understand where we're at now and why we're there, and the redevelopment commission works hard, every one of our departments works hard. Growth, as you can see in our budget, is something that we're all going to have to address with increased maintenance and all the services that we provide, but it's created a significant investment in our community, allows us to grow and continue to create the opportunity that we've been trying to do since we've been doing it, so. All right, so you can keep that in your budget books. Before we start budgets, I also want to pass out, this is just the impact of 27 pays by department, so as you're going through specific departments, you can see how much that 27 pay increases that budget for this year. Thanks, Jeremy. I grabbed the...
Thank you very much.
It's two pages, but there's only one that means anything, so.
Is that one of my group there, too?
There you go. So again, this is just something you can put in your budget book as you're looking through the increases by department, and you'll see exactly, Connie figured this from payroll and passed this along to us, to the department heads, so they knew what to add in for that extra pay for this year.
Mayor, before we get too far down the road, last week, we had a little hiccup, doors were locked. I just want to make sure they were unlocked this, this week, in case somebody comes in late and wants to get in. I'll go check while Jeremy's...
Here, you might, let me know.
I don't want to do that.
All right, well, let us know.
It's above his pay grade.
We'll sign you. If he doesn't come back, we'll go let him in. I know there was people last week tried to get in.
Right, I appreciate that.
Two weeks ago, and this occurred to me.
If Jeff doesn't come back, that means he got locked out.
Or he went down the street block.
I also just didn't want to hear this.
All right, Sean, I think while we're having this hiccup, you can work your way up to the front, and we'll get started with the parks budget here in just a second. All right, well, parks budget, I assume you're going to start with the first one, 204?
Yeah, I'll start with the 204. That's the parks operating budget. Do you want me to weigh on Jeff, or can you go ahead?
Yeah, let me, I better go check. I'll take a...
It's taking a little while, isn't it? Got locked out.
Are you going to use the explanatory sheets or the...
Yeah, if you could go to the explanatory sheets, I'm going to go off of that. Be a little easier for follow me, I believe.
Thank you. Were they open?
On lock.
Oh, good.
All right, Sean, you're on.
Okay, so Jeff, I was just telling them, I'm going to go off our explanatory sheets at the end of our budgets there. We're going to start with the 204 budget. We'll start with personal services. Salaries and wages is going to be $1,650,000. As Mayor was just saying, there is a leap year next year, and there will be an extra pay in there, so that, that's part of that increase. Employee benefits, we're going to be at $626,500. Other personal services will be $2,000, which that includes our cell phone allowances. Total for personal services will be $1,693,500. That is a little bit of an increase, but it's mostly due to the leap year and then also the pay increase that we were asked to put in. Move on to section two. Any questions on that first section?
Lauren, again, I might add for this week, I had mentioned it last time, we have been notified that our, as, as the total trust, our increase, premium increase is going to be, they're telling everybody to plan for around 3%. We budgeted for 15, so a significant amount of that insurance cost is going to be coming out of there, and any other budget that's presented tonight, because, and last week, two weeks ago, all those budgets reflected a 15% increase.
Section two will be supplies, and office supplies will be at $3,200, which is the same as last year. Go down to our operating supplies. This is the supplies needed for the operation of Central Park and all the 18 other parks in the city, just everything needed to operate on those, and that is going to be at $101,800, a 1% increase. The increase on that is due to the cost of in-design Photoshop stuff on the recreation. If we were to contract out the design of our rec guides, it would be several thousand dollars per year, so we're saving money by this $1,000 increase deal there. If we go down to, so the total of our operating cost is $107,000. Sorry, I kind of got ahead of myself there, but part of the increase was, was due to that in-design that I was just talking about. Also, material costs are going up, so it costs a little more to buy material to fix things. Other supplies is $300. We keep that in there. It's meals for snow removal crews. We've been pretty lucky lately not needing them, but we like to keep it there in case we have some long nights. Total for supplies is $212,300 with a 3% increase there. Category three, other services and charges. Our total there will be $212,400. That's a pretty big increase, but it's largely due to, we're trying to get construction designs of the Center Lake Pavilion to include our offices. The future of our offices right now is pretty uncertain, so we're trying to... The future of our offices right now is pretty uncertain, so we're trying to get a step ahead with these construction designs, we could submit these out for bid at any time in the future, so we'd like to go ahead and try to get that done. And B, communications, transportation, total there is 38,000 dollars, has a decrease of a half percent. As you can see, that's mostly telephone, internet, and that type of stuff. Category C, printing and advertising, the total there will be 24,000 dollars. That is an increase from last year, most of that is due to, we have five new programs in our recreation department, this will be towards advertising for those and promoting those events. Our recreation department's really growing and doing well, so we'd like to keep that up. Category D is insurance, it is 44,100, that's the same as last year. Category E is utility services, that is 139,400 dollars. That's a slight increase, mainly because of all the growth around Central Park with the Buffalo Street, we're going to pick up most of the utility cost on that after everything's said and done, so we just wanted to have a little bit extra in there to pay for that. Category F, repairs and maintenance. Get my pages straight here, I'm sorry. The total will be 166,300 dollars. That is a decrease from last year. Next, that will include demolition cost of the gas station at Central Park property, which I'm really excited about that. Category G is rentals, total will be 25,500, and that will be the same as last year. Category H is other services and charges, the total on that will be 82,200, and that will be the same as last year. Total for other services and charges is 731,900 dollars, that is a 7 percent increase due to construction drawings and gas station demolition. Any questions about any of that?
I think it's just important to point out that while you saw a big increase for those drawings, they cut things in other areas, so in the end, you only ended up with that much of the increase.
And capital outlays, as you can see, everything is pretty much part of our five-year master plan, we try to stick with that, and growing as a department. The total for that is 134,800 dollars, that is a small increase, but I, I think it's due. So, total proposed budget in the 204 category is 2,772,500 dollars, a small increase, 7 percent. This is due mainly to the construction designs for the Pavilion Office project, the demolition of the gas station at Central Park, and then also the extra pay period next year and insurance increase.
And that also includes a larger-than-expected premium for insurance, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Any questions? All right, so we'll, we'll go over to the 211 budget, that is our non-reverting recreation Operating supplies for the recreation is 11,250 dollars. That is a small increase, but like I said, there's five new programs, so it takes a little bit extra to run those. And then also printing and advertising, and that's for other charges, that'd be 7,100 dollars for a total proposed budget of 18,350 dollars. In the very last page, I believe you guys have a copy of all the events and programs that we are running next year.
Yes.
So just as a reminder, this is not a tax-supported fund?
No, it's a non-reverting, yeah.
Questions? All right?
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Good job, Sean.
Good to see you, Larry.
Okay, let's move on to police, chief. You guys can start with budget number six.
All right, proceed, okay. This is the general police budget, the 2020 proposed budget. Likewise, obviously, the increase, significant amount of that is because of the 27th pay. I calculated the numbers, without that 27th pay, the increase would be 4.2 percent for salaries. Insurance increase as well, obviously because of the 27th pay. But the total, including the insurance, perf, pension, and salaries, and you'll notice that the cell phone allowance was moved, per earlier discussion this year, to communications, so that's a decrease of 17,700. But the overall, total personal services for 2020 proposed, 4,651,365. And that is a 7.4 percent increase over last year.
Chief, will that give you a full staff, then?
That puts us, that'll put us at 40, so if we're at full staff, but correct, 40 is the grade upon full staff as of 2018, I believe.
Okay.
Supplies for the police department, looking at a decrease of 2.75 percent to 2,000, I'm sorry, 283,000. Other services and charges, professional services, communication, transportation, as I said before, that's the increase of 17,700 was from the mobile devices, which was transferred from salaries. A slight decrease in utility services, repairs and maintenance, staying consistent with the prior year's budgeted amount, just looking for other projects to maintain the facility, the, the compound at the police department. Rentals, other services and charges, total 398,000, it's an increase of 5.65 percent. And then finally, capital outlays, machinery and equipment, obviously the most noted is the police cars. We're looking to, or asking to purchase four police commissions from the police general budget in 2020, that is consistent with what we asked for for 2019, although in 2019, we are purchasing a fifth vehicle, so looking to add four new police cars in 19, and then you'll see later on in a different budget that we're looking to pursue a detective vehicle or unmarked vehicle, a used vehicle. But the capital outlays, radar units were removed, offset by the law continuing ed budget, the, you know, I guess the item of note would be the, the taser, which is an unknown for us right now, we're not sure on potentially if we're going to upgrade to the newest weapon, or if we're going to actually stick with what they're still currently providing. We just want to be able to provide the best to our officers at this point, we're still researching that. So with that being said, the total capital outlays is 314,000, that is an increase of 3.2 percent from 2019. And the total estimate budget, or total budget estimate, is estimated at 5,636,465. That is a 6.48 percent increase. And again, I believe the mayor gave you a worksheet that would show us, offset some of the, the cost of the 27th pay, but if you deducted the 113-plus-thousand for that salaries, and the 20-plus-thousand for the benefits pertaining to that additional pay, the increase would only be at 4 percent for, for the general budget. Any questions regarding the police general budget?
Questions? All right.
Law continuing ed next?
Um, probably the forfeiture fund.
231.
231?
231.
That's 231 and on tax budget as well?
Yes. Scott, you might just give essentially what this fund does, what funds these house and how this is utilized.
Yeah, so this is the, the forfeiture fund, I believe this is year three of us actually budgeting these funds, so any items that we are able to for, to receive, any seized items that we're able to obtain via forfeitures, and typically that's through, we use the prosecutor's office, we could use other attorneys, but it's a civil process and pertaining from typically criminal investigations. These items, once seized, if it's a vehicle of sorts, can be auctioned in a share of sale, and the majority of that would, would go to the police department forfeiture fund. A portion of it goes to the, a small portion goes to the sheriff's department for the cost of the, of operating the sale, and then the, there's also a portion that goes to the state Indiana education fund, to the schools, to the school systems. But we certainly, case by case, we obtain from time to time, anywhere from 800 to 1,500, a few thousand dollars in cases where we obtain cash as well, and then that, once it's adjudicated, or once we receive a court order allowing that money to be deposited into our forfeiture fund, that's what we do, so we send it over to clerk's office and deposited, but we obviously can't touch that money until, based upon the procedures of the city of Warsaw, until it's been budgeted. So as of right now, we have approximately, I'm going to guess, we have approximately 70,000 dollars in that forfeiture fund. I'm asking to budget 67,200 for various number of items. You'll see that it's a decrease from last year, but simply last year, we budgeted 86,350, and we did leave some money in there leading into this year.
At the end of July, you had 113,000.
So in this particular fund, then, like at the end of the year, if you haven't used all that money, it carries over into the next year?
Correct, correct. If we were not to purchase all of these items listed in this proposed budget, obviously that money would be available, we'd be budgeted, I'd make an attempt to budget it again next year. It works very much the same as the law continuing ed as a revenue account, even though, so it is a revenue account, we just have no idea to, you know, no idea how much revenue we're going to get receiving. We're certainly hoping for, you know, a large forfeiture at some point.
Questions? All right, law continuing ed?
It's 233.
And not tax-supported fund, Scott, you might comment on where the funds come from and how they're utilized?
So the law continuing education, it is a revenue account, it's not tax-based. Majority of these funds come from the law enforcement user fee, which is court docket fees, any traffic citation that our officers issue, we do receive back a small amount, I believe maybe four or five dollars per ticket. Accident report fees, we have, you can either come in person and pay for that accident report, it can be done online, so we have an agreement through a software company, and then a handgun license fees, so those are the three large entities that contribute to the, you know, the miscellaneous revenues for the, I'm sorry, for the law continuing ed. And traditionally, we, we have a supply category which allows us to, you know, allows our department to have certain supply items that we wouldn't want to purchase from using tax dollars. Secondly, the communications and transportation, which is just continuing education, we like to supplement the police budget with this account as well, and then anytime we can obviously offset our budget, which in this case, in the past, we've actually purchased cars, if you recall out of it, the dollar amount is down, but we are offsetting, we are going to take 7,500 to purchase radar units, so this total budget is estimated at 15,500. Not estimated, but that is the proposed budget.
And it looks like there's 54,000 in there at the end of July. Questions?
Yeah, Scott, I know you have to replace the K-9 officer, where does that money come from, what budget would it come in?
Well, unfortunately, none of that happened before this budget was created.
That's why I want to know, because we have a chance to add it back in somewhere, but where would you put it?
Well, a large portion of a K-9 is the training for the, for the, for the K-9 and the officer. I'd have to look at the last proposal, but, you know, the high end is 20,000 dollars for a K-9 and the, a new, new K-9 and the officer being trained as well. So, you know, that's something that I was going to have to discuss with the mayor at some point, but at this point, you know, a portion of that could be taken out of our, our continuing education, I believe.
That's why I was just wondering if.
And I'm not sure where the other portion would be. We can go ahead and ask for a resolution tonight, I guess, to move money, but I don't know how the mayor wants to proceed with, with the potential, potential purchase of a new K-9.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we had some options in the budget in order to do that, so we're not caught short.
I appreciate you bringing that, bringing that up. So just, I guess, so the community and the mayor's, the mayor's already aware, but certainly for the media, but I believe last Friday, the Board of Works, I wasn't able to be present, but Officer Trent Shively is, is resigning to pursue a different career, and his K-9 is of an age of retirement within a year to two years from being almost forced out, based upon a dual-purpose K-9. We just received word this week that our, the DAX, our, our additional patrol K-9 unit has health issues and, you know, it's not looking favorable, so there's a good chance, you know, we'll be back down to one K-9, but we will not have a dual-purpose K-9, which is very important to our patrol units, to have that for both, you know, for the pursuit, for the, just for the safety of the officers and checking, you know, areas, tracking, as well as obviously the known, you know, drug enforcement.
So, I mean, is that something that we need to address in the budget at this point in time, or do we find money for that from somewhere when we?
Well, there's several ways we can go about it. If, I can sit down with clerk treasurer and look and see if there's ways we can insert that, if not, it could potentially be additional appropriation, when it becomes more, we know the exact amounts, and now looking at potentially two, that may be something you have to think about, and again, that's part of the flexibility you do get with the budgeting process, is that if, if things like this come up, you know, you're looking at potentially being allowed to do an additional appropriation, and you still have to go through public hearings, and it's very similar to this process of allocation, it does allow you to do that. So if, if we haven't advertised, there's the possibility we can still slide that in, so we'll, we'll certainly take a look at that.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like for us to, because I just know how invaluable those officers are, and if we only have the one that will be in the schools, we, we don't really have an officer out on the ground where you need them.
Right, we, we truly need at least a second shift K-9, you know, on a daily basis that can help with calls even after hours, but.
Yeah.
We're certainly covered during the day, but, yeah.
Scott, how long does it take to train K-9?
We, we go through Von Lick and. We we go through Von Lick, and so it's based upon their schedule, so I believe we looked into it just recently, I want to say there was a course this fall, perhaps October, so we would have the opportunity to, the officer would be able to select, we do a selection process for that K-9 handler, and we, that K-9 handler would select the K-9 himself along with our, one of our administrators. So really, once that course is scheduled and complete, they come out of, you know, the K-9 and the officer come out trained and ready to hit the street.
But I thought it was coming up this fall or?
It is, I mean, yeah, they're only they only offer training every so often, I can't tell you the dates, but I know that it would be this fall, I mean, we have some time.
Usually the K-9 officer is trained before the dog itself, but then the officer that's going to work with the dog has to go and work with the dog, and that's what takes a little bit of time, but but they don't always have them available, so when they say they've got one that would fit well, you got it ready to go, and that's why I don't want to.
You know, I was just curious if it was something that could be done before the end of the year.
Again, I think that's the flexibility, you know, the budget is always a moving target, and here's a perfect example of something that's happened kind of at the eleventh hour, and and we'll see what makes sense. We'll certainly not get caught short if if we need to come back to council for disappropriation.
Yeah, okay.
There probably are some some corrections that may need to be made to the budget, but typically the the budget is advertised and then we can lower it, but we can't raise it.
Right, that's why I just wanted to make sure.
We'll just see if there's some flexibility there, and if not, we'll certainly will have other other avenues to do that.
Yeah, because we're looking at between forty and fifty thousand dollars of expense to replace too, so it's important.
And I do, I do believe if if we were to use twenty nineteen dollars, we would have some money in training to go towards that, and likewise with twenty, you know, twenty twenty, we'd certainly be able to.
Yeah.
We would expect all that money to be transferred.
Do you know what appropriation area you usually take the new Canines from?
I do not, I I know that a portion of it can come through training, the training portion, obviously, but as far as the purchase of the K-9, if I were, really the reason for that, the last three Canines were purchased by a donor, so that would have come from a donation account.
Well, that'd be nice if we could get another donor too.
Yeah, I'm not going to publicly ask for a donor, but that would be nice. And again, we have had a donor in the past, you know, and she wished to remain anonymous, but it's tremendous that she was able to do that, provide that for the city of Warsaw.
Well, thank you, I just wanted to bring that forward, so I want to make sure that we're prepared, and I didn't know about the second one, so.
Right.
Yeah, that's a concern.
Yeah, the the news just came, I guess, at the end of last week.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
I think we still have eight oh two.
You have the pension, your pension.
We have eight oh two to do for you.
Sorry.
I interrupted you, but I was, I knew he didn't, I knew the K-9 officer didn't belong in the pension part, so I just wanted to see where it belonged. Eight oh two, yeah.
This is the the police pension fund for the old police pension fund, and this is not, some of these pensioners are paid via or based upon the seventy-seven fund pension, which is the current police and fire, nineteen seventy-seven police and fire pension fund. These funds for these individuals are paid for, received by the city of Warsaw, budgeted annually based upon the beneficiaries and the the actual retired officers. I don't, I notice, I do not have a summary sheet on this, but this this is a reduction based upon the fact that we lost, we lost an officer last year, Douglas Brumfield, and so it was reduced to his dependent, so. The overall budget for the police pension is three hundred, five thousand, six forty, three hundred, five thousand, six forty. All the other, for the the pension secretary, that amount will remain the same. Death benefits remain the same, and the office supplies remain the same.
So something I'll mention on this pension fund, this and and fire pension funds are no longer necessary to be supported with tax dollars, is supported from the state, and I think this is the first year we've eliminated the tax rate on both police pension and the fire pension. There's about an eight hundred thousand dollar balance in that police pension fund right now, and payments are all made from the state, so.
And they have an investment of five hundred thousand dollars every year, so we're good to go for.
So the pensions are very stable, and again, don't require any tax support at this at this point. That was all shifted over before me, and that's gradually the amount that has been required from the city has decreased to the point where we don't need to support that. But we support it, but we just don't fund it with tax dollars.
Not our city taxes.
And it'll be the same case with fire pension when that comes up, so.
And that's only for five actual pensioners and then five dependents.
Chair?
One, that's not on this, so. I noticed you still got that motorcycle in there.
In the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's been there for a decade.
Hmm?
It's probably been there a decade.
Yeah. You ever get it out on the road?
Yes, it does.
I've not seen it.
I've seen it.
Have you?
Yeah, I'm thirty.
Well, you can have them drive by your house if you want, but we currently do not have a motorcycle. It, the lease ran out, so this is the new lease.
I just pissed the money, but, okay.
Appreciate your input.
Anybody else? All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Mayor.
Counsel. Fire. Michael?
One oh three for his fire protection territory operating plan.
Good evening. This was, all of our budgets were presented to fire territory board here in the August meetings, and they came back with a favorable, Mr. Clonder, the mayor said on that board. So if we look at our proposed twenty twenty budget for operating, as with what the other departments noted, the twenty-seven pays, you will see that salaries and wages is a nine percent, employee benefits is eleven percent. You'll notice that there's an attachment A and attachment B that's in the back section that you can refer back to after this, and that'll give you the breakdown support we've come up with those percentages and how we've gotten to that. And then other professional services, which is the clothing allowance, cell phone allowances are twelve percent, so a total of ten percent on professional services. And of course, that will be reduced when we get into our insurance reduction. Second page is supplies, with no increase between two thousand nineteen and two thousand Next page.
I was just clarifying with Cindy the.
We're on three.
Extra pay was, the fire territory was a hundred, two thousand, and that's one oh three, oh oh, one 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 on your, on that sheet I gave you. And the police department, which was down towards the bottom, is one oh one, oh oh, six, one one one, and that's a hundred, twenty-five thousand. All right, sorry about that. Go ahead.
I'm up on three, Mayor, if you want to catch up.
Okay.
So professional services, you're going to notice a drop in professional services from new hire physicals and background checks, and also computer maintenance. So there's a deduction of a difference of fifteen percent below. Communications is the same, printing and advertising is the same. Insurance, we removed the volunteer accident, our workman's comp and accident health is out of there, and you'll notice that there's a little bit difference of a drop in workman's comp and the umbrella policy, so there's about nineteen percent decrease there. Utility services, we left the same. Repairs and maintenance, the increase is your bottom line between on the incident inspections, payroll maintenance, and that includes what we do with required testing of, like your fire hose and your pumps, so there's a little bit of an increase there, so five percent. Next page is our rentals, stayed the same. Clerk had us put into two thousand sixteen Geo bond payment.
That's just to go for, if we need to borrow money from another fund, we can just take that to help with the Geo bond payment, because this is from the rental that they receive for the ambulance service.
That is correct.
So I had my park it there just in case we needed it, but hopefully.
So to explain that, Lutheran EMS pays a rental on station three, and that was a part of the joint venture with them for, goes towards whatever we need to use it for, and that was a good place to.
And and for a percentage of that went towards the reduction of Wayne Township's payment to us every year, plus our payment as well, it's a small amount on both sides.
So other services and charges, you'll see that there's a removal of volunteer contract, so that category is a minus five point two four percent increase. So then you go to capital outlays, machinery, equipment is the same, next one's got a healthy decrease, but you're going to see that added back into account four ten, the budget four ten for equipment replacement. It was recommended to us by Page that we move some of that over to that because it would be easier on our budget. So our bottom operating fund budget is, before the reduction of the insurance, is seven point eight eight percent. And again, we've we've given through the clerk's office to you all of our working spreadsheets that show where we come up with our figures for you.
Can you tell us a little bit more about the EMS coordinator? That's going to be a civilian position or?
In our salary ordinance, we've always had the assistant chief's position, we've always had the training officer, we're not using the training officer slot. So when I sat with the mayor earlier this year, we look at, we'll probably hit twenty-six to twenty-seven hundred runs this year, and seventy to seventy-four percent of those traffic accidents involving injuries and medical calls. I keep talking about we're on a compass emergency services, so we're looking at bringing somebody in that's a paramedic that's also a primary instructor, so that individual will be able to maintain all the records and everything that we need to do to report to the state each month. There's protocols we work underneath that are different than standard operating procedures on the fire side, on the medical side you have protocols. Those protocols are assigned to us by our medical director, and that's Dr. Hartman. So this individual will work directly with Dr. Hartman, he does review of all of our medical reports that we have to do now by law. If we have hands on on a patient, as Cindy can remember, there's quite an depth medical review that has to be done before it gets sent to the state. And then we get involved in more medical training to stay on top of things. So the battalion chiefs and I, we had tried to float this around between a couple of different individuals while they were working shift, and it just wasn't working. And the battalion chiefs came to me and with a group, and they said we need to look towards moving towards an individual, that that's all they do. This individual would be a civilian position, not involved in the seventy-seven police and firefighter pension program, because his primary duty, even though he could be a firefighter, is to handle EMS and the things that we do in EMS world. We think it's a win on our part, the battalion chiefs are way behind us, I can drug my feet for a little while because I wanted to research it and make sure that I thought maybe this was the fix to some of the issues we've had. If there's an issue between a paramedic crew, because we do work hand in hand with Lutheran EMS, but if you get into a problem with a situation involving a medical issue, this individual, knowing those aspects on both sides, worked in the ambulance world, working with us now, they'll be able to help mend those problems and continue to grow what we're doing with Lutheran EMS in our community.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I I want to discuss that just a little bit. I I think since I've started as mayor, we've seen the training move from first responders to advanced first responders, to EMTs, to advanced EMTs, and with each level of training comes additional reporting requirements. You know, we're not to the point where we have an ambulance crew, I know we have a few paramedics on staff, I think the important thing is that as first responders and being trained with EMT and advanced EMT, that that we're able to provide that service for everyone in the fire territory. And we have, I I told the chief to put that EMS coordinator in the budget, we're not to the point yet we're going to take any action on it, but we're going to look at it as these requirements continue, and I'm probably going to be convinced that there's enough paperwork that we need somebody to assist us with that. But, you know, we're we're really in a position where we're providing emergency services to support the ambulances in in the community, and the ambulance service, with with the runs that they do, where they come from, sometimes there's gaps and sometimes we get there quicker, and and we want to make sure that that we're trained to the level of of being able to provide that life-saving support for our citizens in lieu of maybe us getting there a minute or two earlier. So having that training, I I'm not sure, is is everybody EMS advanced now, or that's that's the goal?
We still have basic line, and our our goal is, you know, there's no revenue coming in, we're a tax-based service. Our goal is to become a training.
What you're saying is we're not able to be reimbursed for those services?
Right, we're not building for our services.
We can't bill for our services.
We're not billing for our services as a fire service. Our goal has become, that we're looking at is becoming a training institute with the state, that we will be able to, when when we do an advanced class, and we, if I had my primary instructors inside the department, we don't have to send somebody away for twelve months to get the training and pay all that overtime, when I can have somebody as a primary instructor, and you have to have that level to be able to teach on staff, we can do it Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, hit every shift while they're on duty, so we can train in-house. And then those agencies that don't have a primary instructor can pay to come here and help offset the cost of the medical side of the service. So that's just one start. There's some other ideas that we're looking at that is going to help us in the long run and help the community.
All right, and there's one new hire in here, and I'd just like you to explain that to the council.
When we worked towards doing the nine for station three, we ended up with the eight. This is the ninth individual that's going to create an evenness across all shifts. Battalion chief bowling your shift is running a man short, this will fill that slot, so we will have the equal amount working at each at each station to provide the care that we need.
So part of what we we tried to do was was to create the part-time position to fill a full-time slot, and we're finding that we don't have the volume to draw from with part-time, so the the part-time program has been very successful, but we're using it to fill in for for vacations and and that type of thing, and the new firefighter will will replace that, create that final evenness due to the expansion to the third station. All right, I just want to make sure you all understood that.
Will we continue to use the part-time?
Absolutely, yeah, they're just paid.
For vacations.
They're paid as they're used.
Okay. We have a a computerized program that they can go in and they can look and see where the vacations are, where the sick days are, people that are not around, and then they can, I use the example, it's like a substitute teacher, they can look and see where there's things needed, and we can put out a communication to them that we've got open shifts, they can go in to sign up and they can work their shifts.
All right, any more questions? All right, Michael, you want to go to the equipment replacement fund?
Four ten.
Four one zero.
Four ten.
And again, we'll use the budget explanatory sheet that we've prepared for you. We don't start in the budget until category three. We don't start in the budget until category three. And that first one is other services and charges, professional services. In 2020, actually this year, we've started looking at, and we go back, we go clear back to 2009 and 2012, where there were surveys done by Roger Basset and Associates of all the department equipment that we had and personnel. In the 2012, there was some things noted on Station 1 structurally and on Station 2 structurally. Captain Brubaker, when he was chief, he finished the project with Station 1. Now, we're looking at moving into the project on Station 2. So, we're looking at, we've had our city engineer come out. He's looked at the building, our building commissioner's looked at our building at Station 2. This is the one out on East Center Street. It was built in 1978. There's minor things that's been done to it over the years. I can remember us being a line firefighter. We replaced the kitchen ourselves, the cabinetry and the ceiling tile and small things like that, and painted and remodeled. But now, we're looking at structural issues. So, instead of us deciding what needs to be done, we've looked at a recommendation by our city engineer to have a professional service and architect design come in, look at the structure, and give the territory board their recommendation on what could be done and what needs to be done. So, Lynn's office created a new line item, and that is the professional services. And you'll see there's 150,000 in that for next year. Repairs and maintenance, we left, we did increase it to 290, even though if this, if we do move forward, if something does come forward from this architectural design to the territory board and the mayor's office, there's funds in there this year to do some of it. For example, the garage doors. One of the manned doors on the backside of buildings got a very bad rusted frame. You've got to make sure you got the doors shut to be able to keep it secure. So, there are things that could happen out of this design phase that we would be able to financially do this year and not into 2020. And this has been a part of the five-year, 10-year capital asset plan that I have always supplied in the mayor's office and the territory board. So, that is definitely an increase. You'll see it's 83%. Capital for outlays.
Mike, I just want to make a few comments. You know, we're not talking new kitchens. We're talking about major structural issues. We're talking about a metal building that's rusting. We're talking about settling, foundational settling that's causing some huge issues. Again, I think this is a real important thing to understand, that having a metal building like that with all the condensation issues and differences in temperatures during the winter time creates this, and it's what we saw at Station 1, and that's what we're seeing at Station 2. I think that's just, as we discussed at the Fire Territorial Board, when we built Station 3, we wanted a station that wasn't going to be subject to Indiana weather with the metal and with all of the moisture and rapid fluctuations in temperature. So, these are significant issues that need to be addressed. And I appreciate the fact that we've been able to kind of get Station 1 done. We did some major work on Station 1, mostly structural steel and that type of stuff.
That's correct.
So, again, that's what we're looking at with Station 2. All right, thank you.
Station 1 generator is back in, is in that budget for next year. Training center, we're not doing anything new in the training center. We don't have anything planned for 2020. We do have for 2021 and 2022. Machinery, equipment, we're looking at, out of that capital asset plan that we had, the grass rig replacement, which is a pickup truck and a sled unit, where the pickup truck is used for multiple things, but in the summer time, it's got a skid unit in the back of it that is a fire apparatus for grass fires. Battalion chief vehicle needs to be replaced. Citywide communications is, that payment is in there. Tornado siren, that I moved out of 103, is in there. And we're going to continue with Emergency Federal, looking at placement of tornado sirens throughout your community. The one this year is being placed out by the Biomet area that's also going to be, because remember, they're returning tornado siren. So, that'll help get to south side of US 30, closer to Diane's house and the trailer park, Myers, that whole area. That's the one that's going in this year. Next year, we'll re-footprint the community and see where the next available one needs to go. You're going to see $300,000 in there, and as for countywide communications plan, this is a future plan that hopefully will get started in the next year. It is a large plan. It affects all emergency services and community services, such as the highway department, but it's a plan that fits all over, all over Casillas County. This fund, if we move forward and we need to use it, if we get involved in it and they get started right away, will also assist us in what we've done with our plan and change in communications in the city to do using the dual-band radios, where the police officers and firefighters in EMS have opportunity to be on VHF or 800. And that capital asset plan that the county's looking at is an 800 tower system here in Warsaw. Other capital outlays you'll see is continuation. However, it is a huge 80% decrease because there's no fire truck in this plant. So, our total is a negative 6.51%.
Mike, I just want to make a comment on this countywide communications. This is a plan that I know the county hired a consultant to look at, the need for towers in the county, and looking at countywide fire protection and not just in the city, but with the radios that we've acquired and the radios that will basically serve our community from a communications standpoint in the future. There's going to need to be some upgrades. And that information came from a consultant that was hired by the county, and the city is certainly a part of the entire county emergency system. And this 300,000 is just a placeholder. We have no detail as to what is going to be required of us, but we want to have something in the budget so that if we're called on to assist, that money's there as part of our responsibility to that countywide communications plan that the sheriff and the Casillas County have spent money with. And I know Mike Brubaker spent a lot of time with the county on that and is involved in that, and if you have any questions on that, he can certainly answer those as well as the chief, so.
I also wanted to point out in here, the mayor knows my heart on this, is we have an emergency services water team. We have a dive team and a rescue team. A part of this PPE vest, we're going, because of the vest we wear, we're going, you know, they're just like law enforcement, they're every five years. So, we're going to start replacing them early. But because this team between police and fire is working so well together, I have funding in here, enough room, that when we need something for that team, it doesn't just have to come out of the police budget. I can assist the police department by that, by putting it in our fund, because it is one team. It's, the guys have worked very well at creating this team, so we're going to help support it a little bit more than what we have in the past.
All right, questions? All right, you want to go to your pension fund?
Last one will be the pension fund. It is 801. Okay? You'll see the balance of what we put in this pension fund. And as the mayor mentioned, this is a fund that is, help offset from investments that we have done for years on the old plan and then the new plan of the 1977 police and firefighter pension plan. So, it's $288,088. And if you look at your, the documentation spreadsheets that come along with it, the very last one, which is sideways, that has everybody that's still involved in the pension plan, whether they're paid out of the old plan or they're paid out of the new 77 police and firefighter pension plan. And there's, I see three of them still in here of the old plan, and the others are out in the new plan.
Questions? Do you have your, is your hazmat budget in here?
Yes, we've pulled the hazmat budget, I thought, was a tax-based budget. It's not. It's revenue-based budget. So, there's no revenue coming in.
Right, so.
So, we pulled it.
Figuring out everything, it would have been an underfunded budget, and it was showing a negative amount for our advertisement, which I don't think is good to do, so we pulled it.
There's fun, there's a cash value that's in the fund, and if we do have a spill that we're, it was, that was originally set up by Captain Brubaker when he was chief because of the Warsaw chemical fire. We have an abundance of funds that came in. They established this revenue fund to hold that fund. Normally, when you have a, you can build a spiller for time materials, but when we have a spill on a highway, I'll take, for instance, Waste Management had a tank that had a leak, and it came out on Boeing Road, down the road during a rainstorm. Then, that night and the next day, a recovery company was in, and they took care of all that. Everything we used, if we put it on the ground, they replaced and they build. So, a lot of the times, you see us putting absorbent down at a car accident scene, that's helped to get rid of that material. On large-scale stuff, we would be able to build. And then, money would come back in, and we would use this fund as, to help take care of it. So, we did pull 247.
And that's just the fund that houses those funds that are used to reimburse for those materials. It's a very small fund. And just, I know, I'd seen it at the Fire Territorial Board, and that's why I wasn't sure why it wasn't here. Okay, questions? All right, Lynn, you're up.
Oh, boy. I've been waiting for this all year.
Okay.
Go ahead and stand up, Scott. It's not that great. So.
04.
04, I'm sorry. We'll start with professional services. And you'll notice in my salary wages, there's only a 3% increase because of the split between general fund, fire territory, and wastewater. So, the whole would be 9% if they budgeted everything right. Employee benefits then went up just a tad because of the same split. So, my total increase in professional services was 3.21%. And supplies, I had an up 4% increase, basically because I upped my office supplies from 9,000 to 9,500, just because of the cost of doing business for office supplies. Professional services, everything under category 3, there is no increase. And our capital outlays, there's no increase. So, my total budget increased 2.33% from 196,600 to 201,187.
Questions? All right, CCI 401.
Can we do the general obligation bond first, 307, please?
That'd be great. What number, 3 what?
307.
All right.
So, this is for fire station number two, or three. Their general obligation bond, we took out in 2016. I put the amortization schedule in there, and the total payments for next year will be 257,600 plus the $500 agent fee that we have to pay each year for a total of 258,100. It is what it is. Can't really have much of a balance in that fund, more than 15%. So, I don't try to put any more than about, than a 15% balance in there, but this is what we need for that budget. Any questions?
All right, 401, CCI. This is the cigarette tax, not property tax supported, but.
Yes, and it looks like I failed to do an explanation sheet for this, but I think that it's the same as we have budgeted for 2019. And it goes towards, we have some, mostly in the bike-walk path, if there's any improvements or anything along there, plus $5,000 in professional services.
All right, now, there's 203,000 in that account. I'm sure there's probably some to be spent this year, but they ask us for 75,000. Traditionally, I felt that that's been a good spot for any healthy initiative, cigarette tax going towards a healthy initiative. And that's why that's, that's the only money that we specifically designate for a ride-walk initiative. And the bike committee looks at that and helps decide how that's going to be spent. So, obviously, the idea is to try and leverage that, because there's way more projects than what 75,000 will cover, so.
No, it's got 70 in here right now.
Total 75,000. There's a $5,000 amount, I think, in professional services.
So, if we have a grant or something, that can be used as a.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to use as a match. That's been my instructions to them. Questions? All right. So, let's start with 01. This is the mayor's budget. And you can go to the explanation sheets. I found an error, so I'm going to have to resubmit this to Lynn. It's a small error. The administrative assistant, I figured in the 3% increase, but I did not figure in the 27th pay. So, I've got the administrative assistant at 54,000, and it should be, it's probably going to be about 56, 56.5. So, I will correct that. That would be a small change. What I'll do is submit that explanation sheet and the new budget to Lynn with those, with that proper amount on there. And then, you can either make the correction on your budget book, or we can send out if you prefer. So, I would just, I would just, if you want to pencil in, then it's going to be 56,500. But that's going to change the totals as well, so just be advised of that. Okay? So, all the salaries, again, with the 27 pays now included in the 3%, the 15% on the You'll notice it, it looks like it's a minus 6%, but essentially what happens is you take the number from last year that was in the proposed budget, but that's not what it actually turned out to be, because we didn't reduce the, you know, we budgeted 15%, and I think last year it ended up 8%. So, these figures that everyone has used to figure the health insurance amounts are amounts of 15% of the actual, last year's actual premium times 1.15. So, so those numbers are there. So, you'll see that Personnel Services is up 5%. Supplies is down 11%. Communications and transportation is up, and, let me see here, up 17%. Total other services and charges are up total of 3%. And then machinery and equipment, any capital outlays is the same at, same as last year, no increase. Total 4% increase in the mayor's budget. So, with that correction, add another 3,000, maybe a little bit more than that. Again, we'll get that information to you. Questions? All right, I'm going to move into the council budget. Since it's close, it's number five here, and I want to go through that with you. I would go to your explanation sheets. So, you're not, we're showing a 3% increase in common council wages. You guys are paid monthly, so they're not 27 pays. So, we didn't, that's not impacted by the 27 pays this year. Medical dental, again, shows a 15% increase. So, total Personnel Services increases 15%. Office supplies, I think I bumped, office supplies, $500.
You needed more paper for what we're copying and sending out, the extra reports we're doing.
So, 200s are up 20%. Professional services, I'd ask you to look back on the council budget explanation sheet, the last sheet you've got there. It basically lists the nonprofit council contract requests. That amount of 240,613 is not. the nonprofit council contract requests. That amount of 240,613 is not correct. Lynn had a corrected number that we... Could you repeat that, Diane, please?
194,282.
Okay.
94, 194,282.
Yeah, there was, there was some, I asked Lynn if, to look at that and she's considered that 194,282. It's essentially 1.5 percent of the general fund budget 2019. So, that's a fixed number and we can verify that. So, as you can see, the housing authority went down to the contractual side below. There is also some, I don't know where we're at with the council contracts. Maybe the committee can update us here, but all I've really penciled in is the total, the maximum, the cap on what we will spend on non-for-profit council contract requests. So, does committee have any report on that?
Okay, I can speak to that. We are very, very close, I think, to finalizing. We had questions for a couple of different groups, and I guess in light of some information I received today, one in particular that's probably gonna impact our bottom line on that a little bit. So, I anticipate for the next council meeting, we will definitely have the figures. We're just struggling with a couple of them. It's been a learning experience with the new form. It has taken us quite a while to get through things. And we already see that we need to make some adjustments to the rubric and everything, because some things just didn't quite work out for our purposes, so. But, we knew what that was probably gonna happen, and I think we've got a better handle on everything right now.
It's much better than it was.
Yeah, I really appreciate you guys muddling through that, 'cause I know it was a change.
It's a lot.
Yeah. And it's a learning experience.
Now, Mayor, if we need to move something, like I already moved the Warsaw Housing Authority down because it's into a contract rather than a nonprofit, because it's not a nonprofit organization. If we need to move another organization down into that contract area instead of the nonprofit, I think that's just something the council needs to think about.
It's not a problem. They're all the same line item. They're all professional services and if you need to adjust those around, that's not an issue at all.
So, we can live within that same, is it all or one all?
Well, I think the only thing you have to do is stay true to what you wanted, and that's the fact that you don't want any more than 1.5 percent of the general fund budget going to nonprofit council contract requests.
Okay. So, in your book, you do have the totals of the general fund budget from the previous years?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And I, 1.5 percent, the way I figured it, last year's would be 188,931.
We're looking at 191, so we're only 3,000.
We'll get, we'll get a final number, but I, unless you approach that cap, I don't know that that's a big issue.
Right.
We'll get a final number for the budget.
Okay, okay.
We need to come up, I, I was using the 1782 notice when I, when I figured it. So, Lynn and I'll sit down and we'll, we'll come up with an exact number. But again, I appreciate the work the county, the group has done, your committee has done, trying to establish a protocol and expectation for non-for-profits, because Cindy, as you and I talked, they continue to come in and we wanna, we wanna do what's right and what's good, but we need to set some parameters. And I think that this, this rubric and the process has come a long way to just kinda going year to year and kinda winging it, if you will.
Well, thanks speaking for myself, and I hope the fellows that, I think we've learned a lot more about the organizations because of the information that we've requested.
And I know Cindy's done a good job of preparing the spreadsheet. I think you're intending to share that with council in...
Yes, yes. Yeah, shared it with the fellows. We're gonna have to make a few adjustments.
Yeah, which is fine. But I, 'cause some of you have been asking me, can we actually see the contracts? Can we see the rubrics? Can we see? And the committee's working on summing that up for us, so that we can kind of see it at a glance. And then, if you would have more specific questions about one, you could ask one of the task force members.
Okay. All right, so down in council contracts, the only thing that's, well, we've, we've added the Warsaw Housing Authority. It's not a non-for-profit. And then, I bumped the legal and professional services from 80 to 120,000. I think I did mention that the amount that we've spent on, on legal services is different with the change in attorney. And it's, it's no reflection on our city attorney now. He's, he's doing a wonderful job, but he's working, spending a lot more hours than we had been previously billed by our previous attorney who'd been around for a long, long time and I think really felt committed to the city and just never really raised anything. And I don't think that's fair to, to ask our current legal counsel to adhere to that, that, that way of doing things. I think it's important that he get paid for the amount of work that he does. And with, with some potential, with some mention of maybe some money for a council attorney, there's, there's a little bit, there's some money in there as well.
Yeah, yeah.
None of that's been broken out, so. So, that gives you a total of a bump from 19200 to 260,000. Again, the two increases are 40,000 legal professional services, and then the 30,000 from the housing authority. So, you add that to what's up top, and I, and I've got my 240 figure in, so it's gonna be less than that. But advertising high doesn't hurt. We'll come up, doesn't hurt at all, but we will come up with some specific amounts. Committee will come up with specific amounts for nonprofit contracts, and that's what'll be plugged into that, that subtotal. That will be added to the council contracts and then go over to line 230, or excuse me, 310, professional services. So, all right. Mayor's PR bumped a couple thousand. Postage stayed about the same. I did bump council travel from 4,000 to 10,000. I anticipate that with, with the elections, there's some newly elected officials training that AIM will put on in January and those, that training is critical. And I would suggest that even our regular council members that are carrying over, those that do carry over, avail themselves of that as well. So, again, we bumped that travel for that purpose. I do have, I'll pass this out. I've got four years of IT budgeting and we've shifted a lot of things away from the different departments and consolidated them into the council IT budget. So, as I go down through here, you guys can, once you pass these out, Cindy, I've got the 2020 amounts in there. So, you can look and if you have questions, you can let us know on that. So, that 320 IT, again, it's Google Board Pack, website maintenance, and the app annual maintenance. It went from 43.7 to 45.1 this past year. Printing and advertising went up a little bit. Repairs and maintenance, again, these are primarily for City Hall, bumped that a little bit, 5,000. Postage, that's all the same. Bank charge is the same. We did, we will not have a municipal election next year, I hope. And, I'm supposed to laugh. There's no municipal election next year.
This might be true.
Good crowd.
You're finally right.
Good crowd. Anyway, there's 30,000 out from that. So, let's see. 12 percent increase. The bump was the contracts, and again, that should be coming down. Increased travel, about 6,000. Insurance, we increased 7 percent at the direction of clerk treasurer's office. So, that's where your, your increase is on, on the other services and charges. And then, we just put some money in for any upgrades and improvements on the city server. You know, the city server's pretty much the, the heart of the communications of our city and we've gotta keep up on any repairs and maintenance and improvements that come along. And I think we've learned over the years that IT continues to evolve and get better and better and better, but obviously, it costs more and more. So, there's a little bit of money in there, 50,000 in there, that I didn't have budgeted last year. And again, you'll see that as part of that IT budget there. So, questions? And again, we'll get these, as the non-for-profit group gets, gets their final amounts and we'll get that cleaned up. And that should, that should knock it down some as well. Okay. Let's move on to the edit budget. And with that, I do have...
It's 218.
I do have the edit budget here, or the executive order that establishes the, the funds and the, the projects that 75 percent of the edit funds have to be used for. Just print it out with a bunch of double pages, so if you think you're seeing two, you are. So, but all the information is on there. I did update it to reflect housing incentive. We're not sure what that's gonna look like. I'll talk about that in a minute. But, item number nine on the very last page establishes a housing incentive as part of the edit budget. So, we'll start with, again, nothing in one and two, three is economic development services, which is primarily our dues to US 30 Coalition, Northeast Indiana Regional Partnership, KEDCO, OrthoWorks. So, all of those things are, are listed under professional services. I did put some money in engineering of pavilion park offices. You noted that that was actually in Larry's budget this year.
Yeah, I wondered about that.
So, we will, I'll keep it in there for the time being. There may be some other engineering that needs to be done. And again, I'll talk about that in just a second. If we find we don't need it in there, we'll certainly take it out. So, again, the edit budget is supported by the local income tax and not the property tax. One thing is, as, and I talked to you last time about the comprehensive financial plan and how we're looking at the sustaining of, of our general fund in, in light of property tax caps that continue to seem to grow a little bit, or not the caps, but the credits, that continually limit what we can do with our revenue. The other thing is the increase in, in the maintenance costs that we're gonna have with our annexation. All of those things, we need to keep a real close watch. And that's, that's what we're doing. I've got the draft of the comprehensive financial plan. I talked to Jeff Row. I think this thing ought to be out next week for you guys. You can sit down and really dig in. And what this does is it shows you where we've been the last two years and where we're going the next three years. And it, it takes, it really adds to what you've got here and shows not only what the reserves are, but are the reserves growing? Are they, are they at a level that, that, that we can sustain? Are they decreasing? And in general, the, the general fund with our growth, you know, we've gotta keep a real close watch on our capital projects with the way the comprehensive plan is, is showing our general fund in the next three years. So, part of the strategy is, is to look at utilizing some of the income tax funds, the edit funds and the coat funds to, to do some of the capital projects. And, and you'll note a few things in here as I go through. And again, we can have all that discussion. I did, again, in a minute, I'll, we'll talk about a couple of specific projects where that has been done. But this is part of this Buffalo Street displacement, the park office getting displaced from the Buffalo Street project. It's certainly an economic development project. It's gonna do a lot of, of what Jeremy was talking about earlier. We're gonna have to make some investment as, as that property, when, when that project starts, it's gonna displace our, our park office.
I was just wondering, did every, did KEDCO ask for such a large increase from every member?
Yes, yes. Yeah, and, and I think, Mike, you can talk to that as far as KEDCO and what our new director has meant to this community and the projects and programs that he's fostering and improving in our, our budget in the past with, with KEDCO. Their budget has been very restraining, I think, for what they're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, I'm not against it. I...
Right.
But when you see a 45 percent increase in something, you wanna know where it's going.
He's got so darn many things going on right now, it makes your head swim.
Well, he's asked the county for a commensurate increase and he's also going out...
That's what I wanted to know.
But he's also going out to industry and trying to increase his industry support, which is what he did in his previous job with somewhat neighboring county. I won't call them competing, 'cause we're all in the same region. But, having that budget, that ability, and that support from, from local business is, is critical.
Well, they should be supporting it.
Right. So, that's, that's what's happening here.
Okay.
That's a good question.
He was very good at that. He was very effective.
Yes.
So, the majority or all of that increase is going to KEDCO?
Well, you can see, KEDCO, we went from 55 to 80.
I just, it said KEDCO and others, and I thought maybe...
Well, no, that's, yeah, that's KEDCO. And then, below that is the Northeast Indiana Regional Partnership dues that we have, KEDCO has to pay on our behalf. It's just the way they're set up. OrthoWorks sustained the same. The US 30 Coalition has gone up a little bit. Engineering on, for the US 30, and I might throw a little blurb in. I think it's September 18th, we've got our first public meeting. And that meeting will be at Lincoln School. I believe it starts at seven o'clock, and let me make sure I'm correct. I would ask you all to consider attending that meeting, six, yeah, seven to eight thirty, at the Lincoln Elementary Gym on September 18th. So, there is some money in there for engineering on US 30. And all that really is, is some of the preliminary work that we've gotta do to look at what options we may wanna consider, depending on, on what direction we head. We have no contract with anybody right now for this $25,000. Again, it's a placeholder. We did engage an engineering firm to do some drawings that you'll see at the meeting. These drawings actually take overlays of, of intersections as well as grade separations, and they lay them on an existing map and show you the footprint, how they will impact what we have right now. And it's a great tool for the public meeting, for people to say, well, why don't we put an intersection here, or let's just do an overpass here. You can actually put those overlays down and look at how it's gonna impact what happens. So, we did spend some engineering money this year to, to create these visual aids for these public meetings. And we had a meeting with the, the group of, of all of our stakeholders, you know, the emergency personnel, school corporations, some elected officials, and kinda did a dress rehearsal for the public meeting. And the county has a similar layout for, for what they wanna do. And the city's gonna have, of course, staying on the existing route through town. But we don't really have, again, and that, that long-winded explanation was to plug the meeting, but to also explain that, you know, we may need a little bit more money if we decide to refine these drawings to assist with the public input process. So, that's, that's what that's about.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reiterate just how important that meeting is and how valuable those visual aids are. I know I walked in to that meeting with this mindset and came out thinking a little bit different. Once you can actually see the maps and you can see which way things would go, how you would put in different, plug in different intersections, it starts to make a whole lot of sense of how things probably ought to, ought to go. So, I would encourage everyone here to go to that as well.
Thanks, Jack. And yeah, it's, it's impactful. And the meeting isn't just us standing up saying what we want. It's basically allowing folks to sit down and look and see how these different options will potentially impact. And there is a fourth option, and that's to do nothing. I, I don't know that that's a viable option, but that's, my job is to address that. I'm gathering accident data from MACOG and I think we'll be able to show the, the need, the public safety concerns that we've got are becoming more and more with what's going on. So, anyway. So, September 18th at Lincoln School, seven o'clock. That next item you'll notice is $750,000 in the budget last year. This is the engineering for that Anchorage Road in Lincoln School, engineering, and that's 80 percent reimbursable. But obviously, that's not in the budget for this year. So, that cuts down on professional services by 66 percent, by significant amount. So, capital outlays, again, we had... Again, we had $250,000 down to assist with the Shell Building out in the Tech Park last year. That's not in there this year. The Edit Capital Improvement Plan, item number five is with regards to the Buffalo Street project. And this $500,000 is just a placeholder depending on what needs to happen down on Buffalo Street. Essentially, what's happening is that the mixed-use building, there is a proposal that's out there now for a specific mixed-use plan. And we are not to the point where that plan has been approved. But if it is approved, the developer wants to move pretty quickly down there. So, again, just having a placeholder in there, this money could be used, again, to assist with the removal or demolition of the current park offices. So, that's all part of the Edit Capital Improvement Plan number five with regards to the improvement of Buffalo Street. And then there's another $500,000 that's been put in, and this was the new item that was added to that plan. This is a workforce housing incentive of a half a million dollars. And again, it's a placeholder right now. We're in the middle of a housing strategy with the county and the foundation, Casasco County Community Foundation. We're looking at not just a housing study, but a housing strategy to determine, you know, what level of housing are we short? Where do we have issues? And along with that, we're also in the middle of an application for Indiana Housing Community Development Authority Anchor Industry Housing Grant to where ICDAs would potentially match up to a million dollars for housing incentives. But certainly, they're going to look to not just industry, but the city as well. And it could be in the form of a low-interest loan to incentivize. It could be in a revolving loan. Those funds would potentially not be grants. They could just potentially be loans that would work in some type of housing trust fund. We don't know the details of that, but we need to be prepared because we have a workforce housing issue. I attended a housing TIF discussion up at the Regional Partnership that talked about new legislation that would allow us to TIF some housing areas. But again, there's some pretty strict rules, and we have to look and see how that applies to our community. But we have to be ready. This is about as critical of an economic development project as we will face. And that's trying to get this workforce housing situation under control. So, again, there's a half a million in there. Don't know how that looks. But certainly, as those projects develop, as that Buffalo Street project, if that evolves and becomes a reality, we'll be back talking about that as well as this housing incentive. But, you know, I wanted you to understand why those were put in there. We've also got the same fiscal plan obligation for the wastewater treatment plan. This goes back to 2001 expansion. So, we had some money in, I know, the last couple of years for the new expansion, but that's not going to be necessary for another, I think, four years. So, that's not in there. So, with that million dollars of potential capital outlay, that does bump the edit budget about 12% total. If you look down, I did provide the fund balances from 2019, the beginning, to projected what it'll be at the end of this year. And, you know, we're spending down some of that edit money. But part of this capital improvement plan shows us that our edit funds have been, we haven't been spending them, and those funds are continuing to increase as reserves. And the important thing is that these funds need to be utilized for projects that are going to allow us to improve the opportunity in this community, very similar to what we talked about at the beginning of the meeting. And by investing in these projects and workforce housing and the Buffalo Street project, we're creating opportunity and, again, expanding our tax base and meeting the needs of our employers. So, that's a lot, and I anticipate some questions there. I'd be happy to sit down and go through any of these specific details one-on-one. Or if you've got questions tonight that I can answer, I'd be happy to do that.
So, again, that's another fund that we carry forward, the balance from one year to the next.
Right. Any money that's not spent stays in the fund, but you all still have to allocate it. So... Okay. Riverboat Fund, these are the revenues from the state gaming.
Two forty-two.
Two, what is it? I have two forty-two. So, here's some money. I've always had some money in there for improvements other than building. Could be demolition money, the $150,000. Again, that's a placeholder. We might be able to use that for demolition now that we've taken on the Arnold property. You know, we're going to be looking for government funds to help us with the environmental concerns. And sometimes those require matches. So, you know, having money's available for those types of things, things are critical. I did put a capital project from the police department into this, again, in an effort to try and reduce, you know, the need for $100,000 worth of funds coming out of the general fund. So, again, this is that shift away from the general fund for capital projects, and that's what that's in there for. Let's see, that fund. I think my information was maybe from the end of June. And again, it shows, well, it shows your balances. We'll spend that down if we spend everything from 423 to 254. But again, I think this money's in there. These are projects that need to be done, and to just sit on this money and not utilize it for what it was intended for doesn't make sense, within reason. Certainly, we have to keep reserves if something comes up. But spending that money down a bit makes sense to us. So, that's what we're proposing in the Riverboat Fund.
And the revenue we receive each year is pretty consistent with that $81,000 figure that the mayor has. Every year, we're always told too that the funds are running out, and we're not going to be getting anything, so who knows? I think we'll be good for 2020.
All right. Then let's go to the final CCD. So, fortunately, you all approved us going back to the 5%. This is a property tax funded, and because of the way this is set up, every year, it's not subject to the state growth factor. And you'll see that on your 1782 notice. That's why it shrinks every year as a percentage of your budget. So, you have to increase that every three or four years to get back to 5%. And you'll see after our discussion and your report you read from the Stormwater Utility, you see how important these funds have become to our community. So, I think the state is working on a way to try and keep that fund at the maximum of 5% without communities having to go back and do these resolutions and ordinances to raise that back up. But I would suggest going back to the CCD notes here and just look at the difference. And I think the first thing is to look down at the bottom. This probably tells the story better than anything. We had $881,000 at the end of, at the beginning of this year, projected with what we spend in our revenue. We'll be pretty much at that. But I significantly increased that to try and keep up with these projects. So, we're anticipating a 42% increase from 495 to 705 of spending. And if you look down, you'll see we're going to bump the sidewalk 50/50 program from 30 to 50,000. Repair and maintenance, stormwater is still at 15. Keeping our engineering, I think we've got a lot of engineering that's been done. We know what we need to do. And again, I would avail you to go back through that report that Ryan prepared for you. Again, keep 50,000 in stormwater and maintenance. Again, those are basically repairs after we go in and do our work. And same with street sidewalk curb repairs. All that money is money that's used after a stormwater project is completed. That's staying at $140,000. Where the big bump is, is a 61% increase on capital improvement projects. So, going from 310,000 up to 500,000, again, to try and meet this growing list of projects that we're just not able to keep up with. And spending that down from 844 down to about 600,000. You know, we're taking, it's like about 250,000 out of the reserve to, again, meet these projects. But that's not going to be sustainable. You know, you figure a couple more years, you try and do the same thing, we're going to be out. So, we've really got to work hard to figure out what we're going to do with these stormwater projects.
Well, I think right now, there's like almost six and a half million worth of projects that need to be done that we know of right now. We haven't completed all the mapping of the sewer, of the storm sewer pipes, and so...
And this has always been, since I've been mayor, the CCD is where, this is where this money's gone into stormwater.
Yeah.
Other communities spend it different ways. But these capital improvements, I think previous mayors understood the handicap we have with our water table and with our, all the wetlands that used to be, are now built on. And then people are concerned about the water problems they have because they built on a wetland. And, you know, it just happens. When you live around a lake, and all the lakes we've got, we just have more stormwater issues. And, you know, our responsibility to the lakes and to not pollute those lakes is another big push and obviously a concern that not only is Stormwater Utility, Lila Lakes and Streams, is trying to ensure that the economic impact of these lakes continue. So, anyway, that CCD is a fund that we have to continue to use almost exclusively for stormwater repairs. And again, I think in the future, we're going to have to look at that stormwater fee to help us. So, but again, I'd ask you to go back and look through that report that Ryan did. And I think it kind of backs up a lot of what we're seeing here. So, I think that's it.
That is.
Questions? I've got some marching orders here to get that final 1.5% cap, to also look at the K-9 where those last-minute requirements have come in, where we may be able to stick that in the budget before it's finalized. So, I'll do that. And then, of course, my error that I made on my budget, I'll get that out to you, so... All right. Any other comments? Any comments from our visitors? Questions? Josh? Chris?
Welcome to your first console meeting.
Any, is there a motion to adjourn?
Set.
All right. Thank you. Lynn, do we have anything to sign?
Sure do.
There is something to sign, so don't run off. Get all that, Dan.
Mayor?
Thank you. Yes. Hang in there. One thing to sign.
Mayor, will we get a formalized salary ordinance?
Yes, yes. Yes.